One of the most critical that we've had to deal with was, you know, keeping the trust of our citizens throughout that. Because even citizens that truly do back the police, they truly do believe in the service that police provide, and they know how critical it is for a, for a safe society. Even they were left questioning, but wait a second, is this widespread? Because the media was just feeding it daily. You couldn't turn on the television, you couldn't open a newspaper, you couldn't open social media without seeing something about bad police officers, all because of something that happened, you know, 100,000 miles away, 1,000 miles away. I mean, so it was very critical for us to communicate to our citizens. Look, this is Fort Worth, Texas. You know us, you've known us your whole life. We've protected you your whole life and we're going to continue to do that. If you want to peek behind the curtain, come on down, come do a ride along, come learn what it is that we do on a daily basis. But we're open and we're transparent. And one of the reasons why we didn't have all the turmoil that some other cities, even in Texas, had, was because we have that trust built with our citizens, because we've been doing that for decades.
Welcome to Winning Strategies Playbook, the podcast where we welcome business leaders, CEOs, and industry experts to discuss the rise to the top, building wealth, and real estate insights. Here's your host, Jeremy Span.
Welcome to Winning Strategies Playbook. For more information on this show, go to myexperiencedrealtor.com. That's experienced with an E D. You can click on podcasts, scroll down to this episode, any other episodes, and download this on all the different platforms, Spotify, iTunes, Amazon, YouTube, wherever. Learn more about our guests and of course, if you're looking to buy and sell real estate anywhere on the planet, go to the homepage, click Find a Trusted Professional, and we'll make sure that you get somebody that looks after your interests. But we're not here to talk about real estate today. We are here with my friend Manny Ramirez. What's going on, my man?
What's going on, Jeremy? What's going on?
How are you?
Yeah, doing well, doing well. It's been a long time.
It has been a long time.
Way too long, Jeremy, way too long.
Way too long. And you know what? A lot of people, I know they're lying saying that because I know I talk so much and they're just like, oh wow, that's the reason we go so long, because you will talk so much that it was a nice, you know, three-year break, right?
Well, you give us enough content in our 30 minutes to cover those three years.
That's pretty much, right? Well, the show's not about me, the show is about the guests. But starting this, my father-in-law said when I started this show, I have to do a joke. So I intentionally do bad jokes. Okay, you ready for this?
Let's go.
All right. I thought this would be fitting for your current position. Did you hear the celery got arrested?
No.
They were charged, they charged him with stalking.
That's not a bad joke. I'm actually going to tell that to my 10-year-old, she's going to go nuts, yeah.
Well, the one I gave Alex was really funny because, you know, being a SEAL, you know, Marines and we just kind of go back and forth with each other. So I made that one up and he was like, yeah, that's, that's okay, funny, whatever. So, but so for the audience, Manny and I know each other because we were at Fort Worth PD together. And then later Manny decided that if Span could pass an MBA at TCU, then anybody can get an MBA from TCU. So Manny came in, did his MBA at TCU, and we'll go through kind of what he's doing, where he's at and everything else. So, but for the audience sake, that's how Manny and I know each other. So we always start these out, you know, it's like, you know, tell the audience, like, you know, where you come from? How'd you get to where you're at now and what are you doing? And just kind of give us a little, you know, insight to who you are and all that.
Awesome. Well, yeah, Jeremy, I mean, you know my story, but for the audience, you know, I was born and raised right here in Fort Worth in Tarrant County. We traveled around quite a bit when I was a kiddo. My father owned a construction company, so we would, you know, pop up shops, you know, in Maryland or North Carolina, wherever we needed to open up a project. It was underground cable construction. And, and so that was a pretty good exposure, you know, in my childhood to business and how it operates and how you set up shops and instill or implement leadership strategies up and down in a different location, even with folks that you just met. But, but we came back, I mean, Fort Worth, Texas is home base for us. I went to Boswell High School. It's where I met my beautiful wife, Fabiola. You know, we've been married now for nearly 15 years, we've been together and, you know, she's, she's a wonderful woman. She's a saint.
By the way, both of y'all are so good-looking that it just literally makes me throw up, right? It's like, it's like y'all should be on the front page of every magazine.
Well, you know, and the good thing is the kiddos look exactly like my wife. And I've got three beautiful daughters, Sophia, me and Penelope. They all go to school here in Eagle Mountain ISD. So they're, we're keeping our roots right where we are. You know, I live over in the Eagle Mountain Lake area and, you know, we love the environment. So, I mean, my genesis into the police department, you mentioned we worked there together, and we miss you every day, by the way.
Stop lying, stop lying.
I have to say that.
That's the politician in you, right?
Now, genesis in the police department, you know, going through college and looking around and, and I recognized, you know, started going on write-outs because I had family members that were in the department. And I recognized, man, I'm young, I'm able. There's not many people kind of jumping, lining up to do this that if maybe I can help out, maybe I can add some value. And more than anything, you know, getting married and starting a young family said, I don't want my wife and children to ever have to interact with the people that I see here on the streets that are victimizing. You know, I kind of want to be that shield, I want to be that wall. And, and so I signed up and got involved. I was the youngest guy in my academy class, academy class president. Very proud that, that, you know, we got 45 folks across the finish line and we started with 55.
That's a big academy.
It was big, yeah.
I think we had like 20-something in mind.
Yeah, but that was back in what, 1925?
Hey, so yeah, back then when we rode horses instead of driving in police cars.
You threw bullets at people because you didn't have guns, right?
No, dude, no, 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 we were still using bows and arrows back then, right? And crossbows and stuff like that, you know? And so, so you go, get, get to the academy.
Yeah, so get to the academy, work patrol for a few years. You know, I found an affinity towards the violent crime. I really liked, you know, interrupting apprehending violent criminals. So I got on with the gang unit. I was in the gang unit for about five years. It was tremendous, almost stalled my career right there because it was just such a great assignment. You know, putting really, really bad folks in jail, you know, working on the National Gang Unit for HSI, which is, you know, the Homeland Security Investigations, Department of Homeland Security. So it's almost didn't do anything from there. I wanted to stay there my whole career. But then I looked around and recognized that, that, you know, leadership up and down the department, you know, it wasn't getting any younger and our good leaders were starting to retire. So I recognized, you know, I might be able to provide some value if I start promoting. So I did, and you know, it's test-based in the department. You know, it's not, you know, you find a good leader and you can promote them like you can at a company. It's, it's a civil service test. You literally read some books, you take a test, you can promote. So started promoting, worked in robbery for a few years as a robbery detective, promoted to sergeant. And a little thing happened around 2016. We, we found ourselves our pension system, you know, police officers have a pension. Our pension system, all of a sudden waved the red flag and said, hey, guys, y'all got a $1.6 billion unfunded liability. And, and so we were all looking around, scratching our heads like, well, what does that mean? And come to find out, you look across the nation and across the state, other cities had dealt with the same problem. And the solution had been, the legislators down in Austin took over their pension systems and essentially mandated that the taxpayers had to increase their, their contribution, mandated that the officers had to increase their contribution, and mandated that in some of these places, you had to take out bonds, you know? And so the taxpayers were really having to pay it back over decades. So I looked at our system and, and, you know, I'm not the smartest guy in the world by any stretch, but I thought maybe I could help. Because by this time, I had already started a underground cable construction company here in Fort Worth with my father and went through my MBA program. And so I was, I was in the process and recognized that I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but I know a little bit about finance, a little bit about numbers. And I didn't know if we had anybody at the table that did. So I approached our association, you know, our officers were represented by a, by a Fort Worth Police Officers Association. And they're the voice, you know, they're the body that, that, you know, really advocates for public safety, not just in Fort Worth, but in the state. And so I approached our POA and I said, hey, guys, what's the solution for this pension deal? I understand it's a bad deal, you know, we don't want to get saddled, we don't have to want to go down to the state and saddle our taxpayers and our officers with a heavy, heavy burden. What are we doing? And, and the answers I got weren't really satisfactory, you know, a lot of it was, well, we'll see what happens in the state, you know, just, just the rigmarole. I said, no, we need to solve it at home. And by virtue of my professional life, I had relationships with, with our Chamber of Commerce, had relationships with, with the folks that run our city. And so in talking with them, their preference was also to solve it in-house. So I recognized that we want to solve it in-house, they want to solve it in-house, so let's, let's do that. Let's not be this 1970s hell no, we won't go obstructionist labor union. Let's go to the table and then let's talk about it and let's solve the problem. So we did, you know, we had actuaries, the retirement fund had actuaries, the city hired actuaries. And there's certain levers you can pull to solve that big of a chunk of a problem. One of those levers is taking away benefits from folks who've already retired, taking away their cost of living adjustment, their COLA. That was a solution that the city had put on the table that I wasn't willing to stand for. And so we took a hard stand on that issue and actually, you know, my, my response to, to make up for that amount that would solve the problem is to increase active employees contributions. So we increased our contributions more than we would have had to, to save the retirees' benefit. And we got rid of our own COLA in the future. My justification for that is we've got time. We're young employees, we've got time to work, an extra year, an extra two years to make that up. But the folks that have already walked out the door, you know, the city made them a promise. And, and that's a promise that, that, you know, these folks that are living on a fixed income, they've come to, to, you know, rely on. And so if we take that back, you know, that's, that's the moral integrity of our city. That's the moral integrity of our county and I didn't think that was the right thing to do. So ultimately, you know, it evolved into myself, our mayor, Betsy Price, our city manager, David Cook, sitting around a table, you know, for, for three months, every week tossing around numbers. And we finally found a solution that, that we got our employees to vote on and, and we solved the problem. And we're the only large city in Texas to have solved our pension problem in-house. So that was a, that was my genesis into the POA, was just getting involved, showing an interest. And then during that process, I was elected president of the Fort Worth Police Officers Association, and I've been doing that ever since. So that's what I do today. And you know, the, the POA, you know, we, we exist to ensure that the wages, benefits and working conditions of our police officers are taken care of. We truly believe that if you take care of your police officers, if you make it an attractive workplace, you're going to have a safer city, you're going to get a higher caliber of employee, you're going to have a safer city. But, but more than just, you know, advocating for wages and benefits, you know, we really do advocate for public safety for the entire city and for the entire state. We're, we're very active down in Austin, we're very active politically in ensuring that our politicians, everybody who we elect to govern, make policy, that they really do prioritize public safety. Because in a, in a business sense, we also recognize that a safe city will be a prosperous city. It's a city people want to relocate to, it's a city that, that people are comfortable raising families in. And so we, we really do take that responsibility very seriously to ensure that we're electing the right type of folks to office. So that, that was my genesis into the POA and that's what I'm doing nowadays.
Well, you're doing something else.
There's that, so.
Let's talk about that.
So along this journey, you know, in the POA, you know, you sit across the table from a lot of elected officials. You know, and that's all the way from US Congress, all the way down to, to city councils and school board members. And, and whenever you sit across the table from these folks and you're, you're getting to know them and you know, hey, what are your life experiences, your qualifications, you know, what are you, what are you doing? What good are you doing for our communities? Why did you run? What good are you doing for your communities? You know, some of them, some of the explanations and some of the track records are lackluster. You know, you find, you realize some, some of your representatives might not necessarily have any qualifications or anything like that and, and it's shocking. And so it really has kind of peeled back the layers of the onion, doing what I do daily. And so in looking at, at how to make our society better and how to make our community safer, I recognize that you need good people to step up. You need the right type of people to step up and say, you know what, I'll throw my hat in the ring, give me a turn. And, and so that's what I've decided to do. So I've decided to run for Tarrant County Commissioner in Precinct Four. That's where I said I was born and raised, up in northwest Tarrant County. County Commissioner, you know, and I think your first thought is what the heck does a county commissioner do? But county commissioner, the court itself, it's one of the most impactful positions in local government or in government at all. By the Texas Constitution, the Commissioner's Court is, is the extension of the state's authority on the local level. So we administer, you know, basically state law and policy from the Commissioner's Court and we're the, we're the ones that actually collect all of the property tax and divvy it out all over the place. That's why we have a tax assessor collector. But the Commissioners also vote on budgetary issues. So the Commissioners control the budgets of the DAs, the Commissioners control the budgets of judges, the Sheriff's Office, every, every elected official inside of Tarrant County, their budget is voted on by the Commissioners. So it's a very, very impactful position and you can really steer where your county goes. And in my precinct, in Precinct Four, we're the final frontier. You know, Tarrant County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the nation. And really, one of the biggest landmass areas that we have remaining that's not developed is northwest Tarrant County. You know, everything out to Walsh Ranch in Alito, everything coming north to Newark in Wise County. That big pocket is where I live and it's where I hope to represent. And the reason that, that's concerning, having all of that bare land, is because you have to ensure that the right type of development happens. But more importantly, you have to make sure your infrastructure is ready to accommodate that type of big booming growth. Because right now, our infrastructure northwest, we're about 10 years behind by my estimation. And it's going to take a while to catch up, roads don't get built overnight. But what it takes is somebody with a laser focus on, on getting involved, laser focus on working with all of the stakeholders that you need to bring in to make, you know, a, a, a safe and prosperous county happen and diving into the work and not being afraid to do the work. You know, that's, that's a big issue with the County Commissioners Court is, you know, it's not just an elected representative position, you're an elected executive. And so you have to have some experience, some connection there to be able to, to make good things happen for your county. So when I looked at the elected office of County Commissioner, like I said, at, at the outset, most folks don't recognize what it is. But, but it truly became a square peg, square hole for someone with my skillset. And, and so that's why I've jumped all the way in.
Man, so when, when did you decide that that's, hey, I mean, was it a seat was opening? Or a current incumbent or what, what kind of opening or opportunity created itself that you were like, hey, you know, Fabiola, I'm going to go do this? And it's like, hey, cool, let's, let's go do this.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, for the last couple of years, after the pension issue and then we've, we've worked on some really good legislative sessions down in Austin. And, and I've worked hand in hand with all of our Tarrant County elected officials, our US Representatives from our region. And, and in working with those folks, you know, I was, I've been asked several times by several different individuals, parties, to throw my hat in the ring for different positions. And so starting a couple of years ago, I was asked to run for Congress, I was asked to run for, for something in the state. But I took stock of that, Jeremy, and I said, what can I do for Tarrant County for public safety from Washington DC right now? I mean, as a freshman congressman, I can maybe name a post office, but you can't do anything else. I mean, it's so loud up there right now and yes, we need good people up there. But someone with my particular skillset, you know, I'm more valuable, I believe, to society down here, working on the ground than going up there. And in, and in Austin, if I want to impact public safety policy in Austin, I can do that right now. I don't need to be elected to the State House to do it. But when you think about making sure that our county is on the right track for the next 10 years, making sure that the roads that my 10-year-old daughter will be driving in five years, God.
Spooky, isn't it?
Making sure that we're on the right track, that's something that, that I wanted to be a part of. And so, yes, so our current County Commissioner, he's, he's held the office for 38 years and, and he announced that he was retiring. And so when he announced that he was retiring, I, I recognized that, like I said, that was the, that was the perfect mixture, perfect office that kind of brought public service and professional business experience together. Because you're running all of your economic development, you really have a good chance to work with your business community there. And I thought, what, what better time than now?
That's great, man. So when, when you made the decision to do this, did you kind of have a, oh man, I'm really going to do this? Or do I really want to do this? Or was it just a, no? You know, this, this direction is, is the direction I'm supposed to go in. How did that kind of, what was that like, kind of getting to that commitment to go, nope, we're going to go ahead and do this?
Yeah, it was a, a lot of prayer, you know, with, with my family, a lot of, a lot of thoughtful consideration. You know, as somebody who's left the police department, that, that consideration is one of the toughest. What I do for the members right now, I truly feel like, you know, that, that was a calling for me is to get involved with the Fort Worth POA, to really advocate for, for my fellow officers. We have 1,700 members, you know, we're, we're not like other associations where there's different associations for different ranks. I represent everyone from the chief all the way down. And so being their voice has been a responsibility that I take very, very serious. So I would lie if, if I said there were no apprehension there or any feelings of, man, am I making the right decision? But like I said, a lot of prayer, a lot of, a lot of talking to folks that are a lot smarter than me, talking to a lot of our leaders that came before me. You know, I, I'm very fortunate to have a lot of great mentors in my life. And so I've sat down with nearly all of them and I said, what do you think? Am I crazy? And so Jeremy, I, I literally sat down with 20, 30 people and I could not find one person to honestly tell me it was a bad idea. And so taking all of the data, taking all of the fact that I believe it was the perfect position for, for my skillset, that I could make maximal impact there. And then making sure that I'm not crazy by taking the advice of all the folks that came before me, putting that all together and, and we, me and my wife just made the decision. And then once, once you make a decision like that, there is no, there is no slow walk in, you jump in. And, and I like to say in my family, we don't take the stairs, we jump in the deep end and we did that with both feet, so.
Yeah, and I, and you're right, I am very familiar with that feeling. So it was, you know, I, I had 17 years in. I mean, I qualified to still receive a pension at a later date and time. And as a matter of fact, I got my annual retirement qual next week on Tuesday. So I want to go out there with all the old timers, some of them in wheelchairs, you know, except now it's much different. The retirement qual, by the way, so much better than whenever you were doing the qual. Like you stand like two feet from the paper and they're like, you hit the paper, you're good, right? I'm joking, but, but, but it was, is I remember, and at the time, I was, I was running Internal Affairs, right?
Now, you were Sergeant Internal Affairs.
Yeah, yeah, I was, they had transitioned sergeants being investigators to detectives and they needed a sergeant to go, go do it. And, you know, and I won't forget, you know, when, when Halstead was the chief back then and called me in and said, hey, because that was one of the few positions that you didn't apply for, right? So if there's an opening, a bunch of people put in for it, you go through an interview process. But Internal Affairs and SIUs, you know, they, hey, they pick you, they bring you in. And I'll never forget, like, I remember sitting in the chief's office, right? And he's like, hey, I want you to go do this, blah, blah, blah. And I'm looking around in his office. He's like, and the chief was like, what are you doing? I said, well, I was looking for your closet. And he said, why? And I said, I thought Ashton Kutcher was going to jump out and say you're punked, right? You want me to go do this? And he was just like, look, man, you got, you had a lot of experience as a detective, you, you spent a lot of years there. And then plus when I went over and brought the first federal prosecuted cases of human trafficking and all of this. And, and he knew that I was getting close to, where I was about halfway through my MBA. And he just said, yeah. And so I was like, well, okay. But it was also, it was not my favorite thing to go do. Not because, you know, and I would tell people all the time, like, look, Fort Worth PD has good officers, right? Officers that do knucklehead stuff, right? I did knucklehead stuff, we all did knucklehead stuff there. You're human, you make errors, right? But, but it was like, wow, I, I just, it was just, it was, it was just hard because there was a lot of, there was a lot of political influence and everything else. And, and then I did some very, I made some decisions that probably, that's why I was laughing. You're like, yeah, we miss you. And I was like, no, I probably made a lot of people very, very angry. Because on top of that is, I, I looked at the people that were in the unit, that were recruited into the unit and they weren't bad people, but they weren't the right fit, right? And you and I learned that in our MBAs, what that word fit means. And so I remember going to the chief and I said, hey, I need, I need, I need two things. I need you to allow me to handpick whoever I want to be in this unit and I need you to just rubber stamp it as soon as I say this is who I want. I want to go through the interview process doing that. And he goes, well, that would suggest either you want to move someone or you want to add positions. And I said, yes. And he goes, which one is it? Both, because Fort Worth was growing at a rate that we were still kind of doing things a little antiquated. I think we had, man, don't get me lying, I mean, that was seven, eight years ago. I think we had like six investigators for an apartment of like, what, 50? I think at the time we were 1,500 officers or something like that. Like, how, how are we?
And, and you guys didn't just investigate officers, you guys were in charge of investigating things for the entire city.
Yes, and I mean, it was just a workload. And, and so the chief was like, are you sure you want to do this? Like you, he goes, man, I ain't got to work on making you unpopular, you're going to make your own self unpopular. And I said, look, at the end of the day, you gave me a role and responsibility to go do it, which is the integrity check of this department. Which means the hardest thing about being a leader, you know, and you, you've always been a leader, I always recognized you being a leader, I mean, you could see that from when you were going through the academy, right? You know, because me and Mike Carroll used to go down and teach report writing and all that. And, and you could just see, you know, you're a leader. And the hardest thing about being a leader is making unpopular decisions when it's that time. And, but I wasn't afraid to do that. And well, and one of the things I think anybody could really say about me is I've never really cared what anybody's opinion of me was. As a matter of fact, I was joking on one recording with an old buddy of mine, I said, yeah, when I, at my funeral, there's going to be a lot of people there. And he started laughing and he goes, yeah. And I said, half of them that are going to miss me and the other half making sure I'm dead, right? But that, that's the hard thing to do as a leader. And, and so then I was presented with an opportunity to leave the department and, and it seemed like a very good opportunity to go make a bunch of money and just be successful in business. And, and then on top of that is, you know, I mean, we have to have first responders that are dedicated to that job. But I was never in love with the job. I didn't dislike the job, but I didn't love the job. I mean, it was the easy way, Alex, who you met, the Navy SEAL friend of mine, like it was just a, it was just the natural transition, getting out of the Marine Corps of like, hey, this is the most familiar. And if you remember, my dad was an officer here, so when you protect pensions, you're protecting my dad. So I'm very, very grateful of that. But I sat there and I was just like, I just not ate up with this. And then, so I, I left for the right reasons, but I went with the wrong people, right? And, and what I would learn later, very much later, because then I went and everybody was like, oh, you'll be back. You know, you're going to come back with like a 6,000 ID. And I just said, no, man, I got too much pride, I won't come back, no matter how bad I feel. But I was willing to go take that risk, right? But I knew when I was leaving. I mean, because at the time I was, I was a sergeant, you know, I make a little over $100,000 a year, I got benefits. You know, it was just, yeah, it was all there, right? Vacation, I was comfortable, but I was just like, you know what? If I'm going to take this risk, I could go do this right now. And then it was absolute worst-case scenario, exactly. So I dropped papers in August of 2014 and then I had a bunch of time left. So I sold a bunch of time and I burned a bunch of time to make my way to the end of December. And, and then, and I had a lot of people that were angry at me too, for leaving. Like I was, I was really kind of surprised by that. They were like, they were like, man, they were angry. And then, and then I had some people that had worked for me that were really, really angry. They were like, man, I finally got a boss that I actually like working for, that's trying to do the right thing. You know, because I always tell them, it's okay not to agree with me, but we're here for the right intentions. And it was just, but I was like, I got to go do this. And then, so I left and that company created the illusion of greatness. And then I was a year and a half into it and I was like, I, this is not what I signed up for. So I relinquished my equity, I was like, you know what, I'm leaving. I, I am, I am leaving, I am done with this, no way, no how. And that was in, yeah, April 2016, I think it was, March, April 2016. Sent CEO an email and just said, hey, I'm, I'm done with all this. You can have my equity, you can have whatever, but I am just, I'm not going to do this. And as it turns out, hey, when you had promised to pay me over the last 18 months and you haven't paid me, you know, I was literally like free labor. I was like, man, I used to arrest people for human trafficking and right now I felt like the same thing going on here. Like I'm working for free. And, and then, so when I left and then a few months later, FrontStar, FrontPage of Star Telegram, that guy and his little buddy, you'll remember, his little buddy, I make that joke because the guy was not little, indicted by the SEC, right? And I was like, whoa. And then this was the hardest part for me, is, I would say that officers are opinionated people, right? And, and, and so I had a lot of people that, that were just reaching out going, how could you do that, blah, 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 blah? And I was like, but I couldn't talk because I had to, I had to have my lawyer talk for me. If there was anything I learned as a cop and detective, you don't talk to anybody. You spend money on attorney and let them talk to you. And that was the hardest thing to go through because there was a lot of people that thought they knew the details. there was a lot of people that thought they knew the details, that had no idea, right? And then you get rumor control and everything else. And here was people that, that just, you know, and they were just sitting there. And the hardest part was I couldn't even defend myself in public, right? Cause my lawyer was like, look, I know you want to go stand up, beat your chest and go, let me tell you the real story of what's going on here. And, and I couldn't. So I was just, man, that was tough, but it helped create where I would ultimately end now, right? Because that's when I truly, truly learned the, what are you in control of? And what are you not in control of? And if you're not in control of something, do you have a workaround for it? And if you don't, just stop wasting your time with it. And so the, the court of public appeal, you know, and, and, but I knew that the people that truly, truly did know me, that there was no issues out of them. They were like, look, man, it, I know you didn't, didn't, you weren't any, any part of that. And I was just like, yeah, but it's still hurtful, right? Because I spent seventeen years with these folks. I trained many of these folks, but at the end of the day, hey, it, it allowed me to end up where I'm at. So point being is to make that jump is absolutely terrifying to make. Because there are things that you, you, you don't, we don't have a crystal globe to, to, to know what's going to happen in the future. But what, what I know about you, right, is you have always been an honorable person. You've always had integrity. Your heart has always been at the right place, right? And then you, and then you've always demonstrated that you were willing to fight for other people, right? And fight for what you believe in. And that's a very cliche thing that you hear a lot of people run for office saying, I'm here to fight for you. No, you're just there to get the seat. That's not who you are. And, uh, and that's why like even unsolicited, you, you didn't even, you didn't even ask me. And I said, hey, send me the donation link. And I was like, here you go, man. Boom. You know, and, and it was because it wasn't, you know, and I could care less if you were left, right, center, whatever party. I was like, I was like, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not making this a, a contribution to the office you hold. I'm making this contribution to you because I believe in you. And I'm not, I don't even live in, 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 in the, in the one that you're running for. But that's the way I've always felt like is if you, if you really believe in someone, then put your money where your mouth is, right? And so, so good on you for, for doing that. And yes, I recognize how tough that is. But we'd be amiss as you're, you're, you're also a very humble guy, right? Is you're, 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 what's really interesting is this is running, when you got elected president of the Police Officer Association, that was running for a political office in itself within the department, right? And, uh, and so to, and if I remember, you're pretty overwhelmingly elected into that position, right? Because other, other officers felt like, hey, yeah, yeah. And like you already said, you know, you, you got a background, you know, in construction and we're talking about development up there. You've been in, you know, running for, for things and then navigated negotiations. You got an MBA. You had that understanding of finance and accounting and all those other things that go into it. But then when you got elected, right? Well, that's when the work, the, the easy part's getting to the position of office. The hard part is, is, is execution.
Absolutely.
So let's talk about some of the things, cause you've been the president of the Police Officer Association now, like four years or something like that?
A little over four years.
A little over four years. What are some of the things you've learned in that elected position that will help convey into the experience you will bring as a county commissioner?
Well, I'll tell you, Jeremy, and just backing up to the, the thoughts about leaving. You know, one, one thing that I truly believe in is, is you get involved, you make better. And then you, you clear the path for other folks to do the same thing. You can't hold on. Cause right now, Jeremy, I'm comfortable. You know, we are knocking it out of the park at the Fort Worth POA. We are clicking on all cylinders and by accounts, we're the most financially healthy organization we've ever been. We just moved into a beautiful new building right across from the brand new city hall downtown. Um, I mean, we are in a tremendous place. Um, our officers have great wages, benefits and working conditions. We have a seat at every single table that we would like a seat at. And so our association is, is doing very, very well. Uh, but it's my philosophy that, uh, you don't sit back when you're comfortable. You have to look around and say, am I providing the value here that I can provide somewhere else? Can someone else do what I can do? And if they can, if they can add value to this association, I think that our, my mission was really just to change a culture. Uh, and I mentioned earlier that, that we operated like a nineteen seventies labor union. We put our foot in the sand. We said, hell no, we won't go. And we didn't cooperate with anyone. We didn't collaborate with anyone and we weren't successful. And so you know the definition of insanity. We were doing that over and over and over again, just being the bull in a china shop and it didn't work. Uh, in two thousand eighteen, it didn't work in two thousand fifteen. It didn't, it doesn't work in two thousand twenty-two. Uh, what you have to do is come to the table and you have to work together. Regardless of what side of the aisle you're on, regardless of where your views stand, uh, regardless of what your, your motivators and your drivers are, you have to collaborate. Um, and so one thing that this, this office has taught me, uh, is working with others um, that, that you might not necessarily just agree with, uh, to solve problems. You know, you mentioned negotiations, the, the pension negotiations were, were some of the toughest that, uh, that, that our officers were ever exposed to. Um, but at that table, uh, there was no ego from me. It was all about the principle. Uh, and whenever, you know, you have, um, folks at the table saying, well, look, the easiest way, the lowest hanging fruit is taking away this retiree benefit. I mean, this is half the problem right here. Let's do it. And, and I'm sitting there, you know, a, a twelve-year officer sitting there saying, well, that ain't right. So I'm not going to agree to it. And, and talking to my members, saying, look, guys, this is the reality we live in. This is the reality, the reality of the problem. And this is what we have to do to fix it. Being honest with them, not sugarcoating anything, uh, not, not trying to slide anything past them, being honest with the members and saying, look, this is our problem. This is how we fix it. So, so I'm very proud of that negotiation and that solution. But even more so, you know that we have four-year labor contracts, um, in the police department, which sets the wages, benefits, working conditions for every, every four years. And in those negotiations, the last time we did them, uh, two years ago, uh, it was the easiest process. And this is from the city side and from our side. And the city, uh, has, has told me this several times. Uh, this was one of the easiest processes that they'd ever gone through. Cause usually it's contentious. You know, you, they want something, we want something, you know, it, it always takes you into Evergreen, everybody stalls. Uh, but one thing that I, I really learned through the MBA program and then just life experience in general, uh, is if you take your ego out of the room, take your ego away from the table and just put your principle on the table. And you compare that with the other side's principles. And if you have two willing parties, you will come to the win-win agreement. You will come to the best agreement. And, and ultimately this last contract process, uh, we finished early. And then it was, the contract has to be negotiated between the association and the city. Uh, and then it has to be ratified by the membership in order to, to take effect. Ratified by the membership and then voted on by the city council. Uh, and in our history, we've had three contracts. In our history, the highest percentage, cause it's, it's a vote of the members. Um, the highest percentage we've ever had to ratify a contract, vote positive was seventy-five percent. So I mean, seventy-five percent of the members said, oh yeah, we love this contract. Let's go for it. Well, in the contract that we just negotiated two years ago, uh, ninety-eight percent of our members voted yes.
Wow.
And, and remember this was right in the beginning stages of COVID. Right in the middle of, uh, societal turmoil with, with George Floyd and all the things that are happening societally. We get this contract done right in the middle of all that because we put our blinders on. And we said, regardless of the outside things that we can't control, just as you said, we're going to control what we can. And this is it. And these are our principles. And this is what we hope to accomplish. So uh, we have one of the best contracts in the, the state of Texas. Uh, and it's not a protectionist contract. You're not protecting bad cops. All the stuff you read in the papers. Uh, we have one of the best contracts because it's fair. It protects the officer's right to due process, uh, and it protects the city's right to due process. Um, and it gives the chief the ample authority to do what he needs to do to operate his department. So the, the one thing, I guess circling back, I got on a tangent about the contract. Circling back, uh, one of the main things that I've learned, uh, is really just how to come together, bring differing viewpoints together and work towards a common goal. We did that in Washington DC, uh, whenever we, we went up there to lobby for the nine eleven, uh, first responders act. I went up there and met with Senator Cornyn and Cruz. I, I got a call from our national affiliate, NAPO. And they said, Manny, um, we don't know if this is going to go in the Senate if Cruz and Cornyn are not on board. And, and what it was, was it was a reauthorization, uh, for the, the benefits for those who we lost in nine eleven, for the first responders we lost in nine eleven and their families. Um, you know, it was, it was set on a timeline where the Congress had to vote on it every five years. The money would run out, you know, there was a real chance that it wouldn't be reauthorized. And if it were, they don't know what they're going to get in perpetuity. You know, the victims of nine eleven, their families didn't know what they would get. Um, and so this act authorized it in perpetuity and said, we're going to fund this fund forever. Until you don't need it anymore. We're going to fund this fund. Um, and so they called and said, Manny, look, we really need Senators Cornyn and Cruz. They're very pivotal on this legislation. And, and we'd like you to come up here. And, and so I, I went without a hesitation and said, absolutely. Uh, I already had a relationship with Senator Cornyn and Senator Cruz. And when I sat down with them, I told them, I said, look, we don't have many nine eleven victims. Um, actual victims, I know our entire country was a victim, but we don't have many nine eleven first responder victims in Texas. But what this shows from the highest office in the land is that you support first responders, that you support public safety, that you support the police officers and firefighters that put it on the line. And they ran into burning buildings and you have those people in Fort Worth, Texas. You have those people all over Texas. And so if you, you sign onto this bill, you're sending that message across the nation that we as a country support our first responders. And we got that bill passed, uh, in two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen. We got that bill passed overwhelmingly in the Senate and now it's law. Um, but, but going up there and making that case, uh, that wasn't because it benefited me. It wasn't because it benefited the Fort Worth POA. It was because it was the right thing to do. Um, and we've done that down in Austin, you know, whenever we go lobby for some legislation or whenever I pick up the phone and say, where are you at on this issue? This is where we are. Uh, we're always on the side of, of what's the right thing. Uh, and I don't think you can ever go wrong, uh, if, if that's how you operate. So being involved in the POA has taught me a lot. Uh, but, but the number one, I would say is just collaboration and working towards a common goal and bringing folks together.
Yeah. And I, I do want to come back to the first responder, uh, thing and support across the country. Cause I think that is a very hot topic, has been for some time now, but, um, but I want to make sure that, that we, we, we cover this. Is what was it like? Because you were, you, when you went in to negotiate with the city, the city was basically, they knew the history of how the POA would normally negotiate, right? The way it's always been done. And you were coming in with a different culture to say, hey, um, we're, you know, we're, we're, we're going to do this a little different this time, but they had a history, right? It's hard. It is so incredibly hard to change historical based thinking. It's like, well, you know, because then it's suspect, right? You know, there's a, you know, yeah, you know, I don't know, you know, we've had people maybe say that before, but then they got the, on the gotcha, right? So what was that like to try to change the appearance of that? Because that was, I mean, that was like pushing a boulder uphill, I can imagine, right?
Well, I'll tell you, so a lot of the work in changing that, that perspective and changing that collaborative element in those negotiations happened before the negotiations ever happened. Um, so we had a culture where it was always a culture of disagreements. We, we, we were butting heads um, with city leadership and, and, you know, we saw our relationship with city leadership as adversarial. And, and sometimes it is, sometimes you are at, at odds on different issues. Uh, but I don't think you can ever, you should ever characterize your relationship as adversarial. We're all working towards the same goal. We all want a safe city. We all want qualified applicants. We all want qualified police officers. Uh, we all want to raise our families in a good place. And so we all have common goals. And so when you, when you, you know, dilute yourself and say that we're adversaries, uh, I think you're really doing a disservice there. So a lot of the work that, that, you know, went into making the contract reality and making negotiations run smooth did happen before the negotiations ever happened because it used to be, the culture used to be um, that, that we would, you know, come out in the media and, you know, we would expose all the dirty laundry, anything we were upset about. You know, we would really try to give our adversaries a black eye. Well, in these negotiations, uh, they knew we wouldn't do that because over the last year, two years that we'd kind of shifted our culture, we didn't do that. You know, we didn't come out. If there was something that needed to be handled between the labor organization, the association and the city, we handled it like professionals. We came, we all came to the table and we said, this is our disagreement. Where's your daylight? Where's our daylight? Where can we meet here? Um, because this is our goal. This is what we want to accomplish. And when you're transparent with the goal, when you're transparent with your principles, uh, I don't think that there is any room for, for mistrust because folks know where you're trying to go. There's no bait and switch. Hey, I want to, I want to get here, but oh, oh, gotcha. That didn't happen, um, for, for the years leading up to the contract. And so I think the city was a little, and the, the association, I mean, we, we were both, you know, I, it was awkward at first getting to the table and kind of feeling each other out, but they knew because we had relationships. You know, I mean, I, I meet with our city leaders weekly, you know, I mean, we're not, we're not foreign. We don't just meet when it's time to negotiate. We meet and we handle all the small issues. And so whenever it came time to handle the big issues, they weren't, they didn't seem so big. Um, and so ultimately it was really the culture shift leading up to the negotiations that made it, uh, that made it so smooth. Um, but, but you are right in that there was a, uh, there was an element of, of feeling out, uh, in the beginning of the process. But I credit city leadership too. You know, I mean, Jay Chapa, David Cook, they did a tremendous job, uh, in really coming to the table as principles-based leaders too. And saying, yes, all right, we agree with you. Let's, let's do this. And at the outset, we set some ground rules and I think you have to do that in any negotiation. You have to set ground rules for the negotiation. Where, when, when are we going to meet? How is this dialogue going to run? What do you hope to accomplish out of this negotiation? And it's not, I want X number of dollars for selling X number of whatever. It's, it's what's the actual goal? Because if you and I can agree that the actual goal of a contract with the Police Officer Association is to get the most qualified, the most well-prepared and the best people to come be police officers, that's the goal. And let's all put all of our energy into working towards that goal. And it might look like something different for you, but let's talk about why it looks different to you. It might look like something different for me. Let's talk about why I believe that wages, benefits, working conditions, that incentives for health, mental health, all that type of stuff is important to offer to a respective candidate. Let's talk about that. And if you disagree, we'll disagree, but we can all agree on the goal. And so we did that at the very beginning. We agreed on the goal. Where are we going? And so once we knew where we were going, getting there wasn't so hard.
Wow, man, that is, so that is, that is, that is, that is pushing a boulder uphill. So if I understand you right is what you were able to do is you were able to create an environment of trust, right, that allowed the things that needed to happen to go ahead and happen. And that's a hard thing to do is to create environments of trust, right? And, uh, like, you know, like I said, Alex, you met, it's like, you know, we, we have a motto, you know, in all my companies that I have now is trust is the currency of business, not money, right? So like when they came out and said, uh, like, uh, for twenty twenty-one numbers, and I think it was like four thousand agents in the area and number six in production. They were like, wow, you sold all your stuff, blah, 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 you know? Yeah. Is the MBA important? Yeah. Or important, the process is important, but it was because of trust. And I wasn't afraid to say no to business, you know? It, it, I was sitting here talking, agents were shocked when they found out like, you know, that I turned down four, five, six million dollars in a year worth of production. Because they were like, how can you do that? And I'm like, well, first off, that's more production than you do. But two, it's because there wasn't that value exchange of trust. And that's what the two core values that we have uh, is first off is the value exchange. You must trust me, I must trust you. Because if it's one-sided, it's lopsided, lopsided, you're in the convincing business. I don't have time and energy to be convinced, nor do I have the time and energy to convince others. And quite frankly, I think there was only one person that ever walked the planet that had the ability to do that and still didn't choose to do that and died like two thousand twenty-two years ago. But as long as we have that value exchange, that unlocks the second core value, which is the value proposition. Now that we have trust, that means you can trust that your money is always going to be more important than my money. And it was really funny because even some close personal relationships were like, I told no not to work with. And I, and I said, it's not that you, you know, they were like, well, I trust you. And I said, yeah, but it's just, it's the way you go about it. That is going to create issues for my team. And my team, man, they, they will, they will, they will die on the hill for our clients that because you have some behaviors that are distrustful behavior, I'm not saying you're distrustful person, but you have some distrustful behaviors. You, you're not going to be able to give them that ability to, to, to want to die on the hill. So that is a hard thing to establish. And the thing is, is we're talking about the city part. Let's talk about the PD part, is what I remember.
Well, ultimately though, Jeremy, on the, on the trust issue, one thing that, that, and you know this, trusting politicians, I mean, it's like oil and water, right?
Right.
And so, but in my experience, and this is what's been so enlightening, I, I mentioned that we were very politically active. Uh, everywhere, every office from Senate all the way down, um, the Fort Worth Police Officer Uh, every, every office from senate all the way down, um, the Fort Worth Police Officer Association, we run the largest law enforcement pack in the state. So we're involved in almost every single political race. Uh, but when I sit across from candidates, whether it's someone for U S Congress, or whether it's somebody for city council and we're interviewing them. I, I'm, I've never, uh, in return for support, in return for monetary support or in return for our, our endorsement, never asked them to do anything ever. Um, I've never said there's a quid pro quo, there may be a day that I call you. It's never been that way because I believe that if, if you can buy that person, if you can do that, someone else can with a whole lot more money.
Right.
And so I shouldn't have to ask you, Jeremy, how are you going to vote on Tuesday night? I should already know because I know your morals, I know your values, I know what you stand for and I know what you believe in. If you value public safety, I know that. I know where you'll be on these issues, so I shouldn't have to, and we don't. Uh, but looping, looping this around and becoming a candidate myself, uh, one enlightening piece is, is well, one, one crazy piece, you got to raise a ton of money, uh, to run for office nowadays. It's ridiculous. Um, but it's a part of the process, I recognize that. But in, in my fundraising and, and when I'm approaching folks and, and, uh, and being successful at fundraising, not a single person who's given a single dime to the campaign has asked a single thing of me. And that is so refreshing and enlightening. And you say, man, this, this, there's no big woolly mammoth in the closet. I mean, truly people just believe in what you're trying to do. People believe that we need good folks in office. And this is why, I mean, I send money to anybody who's a police officer or military veteran running for office. Cause I think we need more of those folks everywhere, whether it's on city council, whether it's U S Congress. I mean, you know this, if you're, if you're a police officer, you're in the military, the temperature on life or the, the volume of life is turned down a whole lot. Once you start making big decisions, I mean, it, they don't freak you out as much as someone who's never had to go through, you know, what a police officer, someone in the military has had to go through or first responder in any form or fashion, for that matter. Um, but, uh, with trust, I think having that trust of your supporters, it's been very, very enlightening and very refreshing. Uh, and then building that trust with elected officials. So, uh, I will say that, that's been a unique part of this, this election process, uh, is seeing that, um, you know, it's not necessarily what you read, you know?
Yeah, and you know, and, and it's really, really interesting when you say that because it's, you're absolutely right is you, you don't even want to receive money for somebody that wants something later down the road, right? Because that's a slippery slope and all that. And, and what's really funny is it is, it is rare, and I mean a rare occasion that I give money to somebody running for office. But the ones that I have given money to running for office was because they never asked, which is, you know, that's a challenging balance because you have to raise money, run, run, run for office is expensive.
Yeah.
But, you know, the, but the people like yourself is I, you know, I, hell, if anybody wants, I could check my link. And of course you might want to be like, hey, do you really want to look at the text that, that's Manny? Like I should change my phone number because of the stupid things you send me, uh, joking, I don't, I keep professional. But I sent you the thing, say, hey, send me your link. You never once asked me, and I said, hey, send me the link. And then, and, uh, and, and I mean, it was probably what, two minutes later, I sent you a screenshot and said, hey, here you go, brother. Good luck. And you know what? And, and if things get a little tighter, let me, let me know.
Yeah.
Right? Because I, I trust you, right? I mean, you, 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 one, you know, you, again, all the, the, the reasons we had talked about prior. But you're right, you need the right people in there, but not just having the heart to go do the right thing is not enough.
Yeah.
It's also having the capabilities, right? Understanding infrastructure, you would know a thing or two about that growing up around that.
A little bit.
Understanding that, hey, uh, like I remember when, uh, we were, you were, you were, uh, 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 as an alumni, I had come to the, the luncheon when you were considering doing the M B A program. And, uh, uh, and matter of fact, you also had another opportunity, it was either do the M B A program or another opportunity, which was a very, very cool opportunity pop up.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I, I, I'll remember when you called me and I just said, you know what, man? I said, that opportunity, if it comes up now, it can always come up again.
Yeah.
But an opportunity to go to one of the most nationally globally known universities executive M B A program? That's not something that people always get an opportunity to go do. And, and I said, in my mindset, I knew what it did for me, you know, especially like I said, when things didn't end up so well. Is it allowed me to be able to lean into that experience and network and, and, and whatnot to be able to go, you know what? Hey, I'm going to have to go recreate myself yet again. And I'm not gonna lie, things have worked out pretty, pretty well. I mean, it doesn't suck that I have a house in Pagosa Springs, Colorado with a million dollar view of the mountain of Pagosa Peak and all that. And I fly back and forth and fit fortune position, but I got that because I, I got an education in understanding the business language. And I remember when you were never talking, I said, look, an undergrad teaches you how to go learn, right? But a graduate degree teaches you how to write, ask the right questions. But the thing about this executive M B A that I could tell you from experience was it's not only going to teach you how to ask the right questions, because I think a lot of times is that's more important than having the answers, asking the right questions. But it's also going to teach you a language.
Yeah.
Much like learning Spanish or Mandarin or anything else, that you're going to be able to communicate with the business world. Because look, I always felt, it was the reason I went and did, when I went and did my M B A, I just, I didn't have any intent on leaving the department when I first went. But I always felt that we needed to have a better relationship with the business community.
Yeah.
Right? Uh, because they pay taxes and those taxes, they, they, they bring money for the police department, the fire department, other first responders. And, and I was like, you're going to learn a language that now when you are talking with someone, you're going to go, hey, I know what that means.
Yeah.
And it's going to allow you to ask great questions in the language that they understand.
Yeah.
Right? And that was really important. So I was really, I was really, man, I was really proud of you for, for doing that, man, and, and, and doing that. And then it just, then as you saw, just life then started taking you a little bit different directions. Because then real opportunities of need.
Yeah.
Started presenting themselves where you had to make a choice of, do I go do fun? Do I do comfortable?
Yeah.
Right? Or do I go make a difference?
Yeah.
Right? And that's, that's a, that's, that's a selfless decision to make when I think about your, your trajectory and where you've gone.
Yeah.
Um, but it would be a miss to talk about the other side of the political arena that you also had to go deal with, which was the, the members, right? Because I remember, now of course I've been gone a long time. Actually, it kind of dawned on me, uh, the other day, I've, I've actually been gone over seven years. Like, I can't believe.
Yesterday.
Dude, it was like, I mean, man, it just flew. But I remember the, the, the members with not just one side against the other. It was like, like three and four different sides fighting for interests in things. What was that like to go to your, your own people and say, hey?
Yeah.
Because that had a longstanding history.
Yeah.
A very long history from time that even I hired on to the department of, I wouldn't say it was contentious, but it was, here's my line in the sand and this is what I'm fighting for. Oh yeah, well, this is my line in the sand. And it was like created a triangle of a gap in the middle.
Yeah.
What was that like going and bringing, because man, ninety eight percent approval, that is, that, to me, that, that says you were able to bring all the parties together for some common ground. What was that like? Walk us through that.
Well, and first I wouldn't say I was able to do it. We have a tremendous team. I mean, we've got a great executive team at P O A. Uh, we've got a great treasurer, we've got great elected vice presidents. Um, and so really it's the culture that allowed us to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, so, so I, I can't take a hundred percent of the credit for that. Uh, we've got a really good team. Uh, but a lot of it, Jeremy, we, we touched on earlier with, with how you navigate, you know, members that have competing interests. Uh, cause it's all, it's seventeen hundred individuals, you know? Everybody's got a competing interest and they think, uh, one way is the best way. Uh, but it's building trust with them and letting them know, look, you're entrusting me to lead this organization. You're trusting me to make decisions for this organization that sets our trajectory, uh, that sets your family's benefits, wages, et cetera. You know, for, for the next X years of your career. Letting them know that I take that serious, letting them know that that's my number one priority. Uh, in this role is making sure that they can trust that we're doing it for the right reasons. They can trust that whenever we sit down at the table, we're not doing it because we're giving away a benefit or, or, or anything for, for any nefarious reason. Letting them know, and, and you do it by proving it to them time and time and time again. And you don't ever go back and you don't ever say, and you don't ever lie to them. And so like you said earlier, why you were such a good leader in the department for I A, just for the department, even as an officer, is because you weren't afraid to tell somebody what they didn't want to hear. If it's the truth, you have to say it. And so when we, when I got involved with the pension deal, you know, that was said, oh, guys, it'll be okay. We'll go to Austin, everything will be taken care of down there. We're going to be all right. Don't worry about it. I mean, the city needs to pay up, et cetera, et cetera. But when I got in and I looked at the scope and magnitude of the problem, I said, guys, this is not all right. We have to take drastic measures here, otherwise our pension is going to get taken over by the state and it's not all roses. So when I looked at it and, and really developed an understanding of the magnitude of the problem, I communicated that to the members directly. I didn't hide it. I didn't say, guys, we're going to be all right, rose colored glasses. So this is the reality we live in and this is what we have to do to set ourselves on the right course. Do you agree? And the members can understand that because the members can always, people can always understand honesty. It might not be what they want to hear, but it's what they need to hear. And as a leader of an organization like mine, that's my job is to communicate the reality. Uh, and then utilize the skillsets that I've learned over my life, um, to, to set us on that right course. And like I said, I'm, I'm very proud of the last five years, we've been very successful at P O A. Uh, but it, but we're successful, not because we're, you know, successful on an island. We're successful because we build partnerships that allow us to be successful. Uh, I mentioned the brand new building that we moved in. We partnered with tremendous businesses, uh, benevolent businesses that's really just wanted to help out. Uh, we partnered with them to mitigate the risk for members because we had a bad deal several years prior. So now that we, we, we're in this beautiful new building, uh, and it's a reality, it's something they can touch, see and feel. They recognized that the process of going through all that, the due diligence we did, sitting in a, a leased office space for seven years. They knew what we were working towards and now we're there. And so showing them time and time again, not just talking about it, but showing up and being about it. That's, that's how you've gained, I've gained the trust of the members. Uh, and, and I'm very proud that, you know, that's, that's a, that's a reality because you're right. It, it's been contentious in the past and I hope that it never is in the future, but I think that we've changed the culture enough uh, just internally that, that it can't go back there. You know, we are a well-respected professional organization and, uh, and we're, we, we operate that way. Um, we're always going to operate out of, out of a place of honesty and truth and, and you can't go wrong if you do that in business, so.
Man, and that's, that, that's, that's a great segue into the, the next thing I want to bring up that we kind of touched on a little bit Joe, when you were talking about, you know, going out there because the, the nine 11 officer thing is, look, the truth of the matter is, is the, there's a lot of public opinion towards police departments. I mean, I don't think it's as much here in Fort Worth, because I think the community is much more ingrained and likes the police department than other places in the country. But it's still a reality and a challenge of fir, fir, first responders are on the hot seat right now. Because, and this is the thing, it's like, I'll, I'll, I'll have friends, right? That'll say, you know, man, what did you think about this? What did you think about that? And, and really most of the time when somebody goes, when everything, when all the riots and everything were hot and heavy. And I'd have people go, hey, as a vet and as a former police officer, what's your personal opinion towards that? And my response generally was personal.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Uh, uh, but I had someone that was really just kind of really poking, 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 poking. And I said, man, that's, let me tell you something. And I said, I'm, I'm, I'm going to break what I normally say. And I said, I'm going to help you out with something. When I was running internal affairs, we had a handful of bad officers. We knew who they were and we were getting rid of them. Matter of fact, I don't think we had to fire any on my watch because they all quit. Because by the time they got to my office, I walk in there with two pieces of paper. One was an I O C and the other one was a yellow notepad that said, on this one, you can start writing out what you did. Or on this one, you can just go ahead and resign now. And that is your choice. Those are your two options right now. But this one, at least you're in control of, you get to leave on your own terms. But on this one, look, if you're in my office now, we already know.
Yeah.
We already got you, right? And, uh, and so I'm just here to present you with two options. And, uh, uh, they were like, and man, okay, here you go. Well, you're right. And they knew, right? People that do bad things know, right? They don't, they don't, they don't, you know, they, you know, you might have some that try to fight, you know, through there, but the ultimate consequences are going to happen for them. And, uh, but I would tell people that. And I said, but we knew who they were. And do you think that we liked that they were there? And I said, I don't trust you, like, like everybody I went and recruited to come in and internal affairs, they were like, why the hell would I want to go do that? Right? And I just said, look, man, because we, we made an obligation to the city when we were sworn in. And if the, if, if the citizens of the city lose confidence in our integrity.
Yeah.
Then that's our responsibility to make sure we don't lose that confidence of that integrity. And I said, so yeah, you might not be a popular, unlike TV shows, maybe it is in major big cities or something like a stepping stone to get to whatever thing. No, it was just, hey, it's your watch now, it's your turn to protect what you signed up for. And, and so I would tell people is like, do officers make mistakes? Absolutely. But what happens is, is when one hits the media, right? We, we just stay, what was up to seventeen hundred officers? So if one officer does something dumb, why, why are we going to make the other seventeen hundred pay the price for what one did? And that's going on around the country right now, right?
Yeah.
And.
Well, that, that was one of the things, um, and I'm glad you brought that up. I mean, that's one of the issues that is in recent memory, one of the most critical that we've had to deal with, um, was, you know, keeping the trust of our citizens throughout that. Because even citizens that truly do back the police, they truly do believe in the service that police provide. Um, and they know how critical it is for, for a, for a safe society. Even they were left questioning, but wait a second, is this widespread? Because the media was just feeding it daily. You couldn't turn on the television, you couldn't open a newspaper, you couldn't open social media without seeing something about bad police officers. All because of something that happened, you know, a hundred thousand miles away, a thousand miles away. I mean, so it, it was very critical for us to communicate to, to our citizens. Look, this is Fort Worth, Texas. You know us. You've known us your whole life. We've protected you your whole life and we're going to continue to do that. If you want to peek behind the curtain, come on down, come do a ride along, come learn what it is that we do on a daily basis. But we're open and we're transparent. And one of the reasons why we didn't have all the, all the turmoil that some other cities, even in Texas had, was because we have that trust built with our citizens, because we've been doing that for decades. You know, we have neighborhood patrol officers that are out there attending community meetings every single day. Uh, we've got code blue members that are typically retirees that are out there patrolling their own neighborhoods, interfacing with police officers. We've got a great relationship with our citizens, so great in fact, that in the middle of those George Floyd riots, in the middle of all that turmoil, our citizens by a margin of sixty five, thirty five passed a renewal on the crime control and prevention district. This was a tangible vote, you got to vote. And all of the, the usual suspects came out in opposition to this, uh, because it was a measure to defund the police. But in Fort Worth, they soundly rejected it. They said, absolutely not, not in this town. And, uh, and it's because we communicated the message that more police officers will keep our city safer. Having funding for police is critical. You can't defund, uh, uh, an essential element of our government. I mean, the constitution only requires a government to do a couple of things and one of them is keep the city safe, citizens safe. Um, and so our, our city, um, they, they've overwhelmingly support the police. Uh, and, and we overwhelmingly feel like we're guardians. You know, we don't feel like we're this militarized occupying force. Our officers truly do feel that connection with the citizens. They say, look, we're here doing a mission and the mission is to keep the city safe. Um, and so I, I, I'm very proud of how our department stood up, uh, during that hard time. Um, and I'm very proud that we kept our city safe. And I'll tell you, my phone was ringing, not just from officers who were, who were, who were, you know, dealing with impossible situations. Having, you know, activists and everybody spit on them, call them everything, threaten them every single day. You know, it was a very small contingent in our city that was doing that, but they were doing that. But then the officers had to go home and explain it to their families, like, yeah, you're hearing all the stuff on the media. It was just a very trying time for the officers. But my phone on the opposite end, and this is what I communicated to the officers, my phone was blown up from our great business owners, our partners. They're saying, Manny, what do you need from us? I mean, we want a safe city. You guys do what y'all got to do. We've got your back. Please tell your officers, we love them. And these were our, our very well-respected community leaders that just because the media wouldn't print that, that, that our community loved the police, they were calling to tell us that. And so, you know, kind of fading us through, um, that whole area or that, that whole arena, uh, getting us through that whole arena was, was, we were bolstered by knowing that our citizens do support the. uh, getting us through that whole arena was, was, we were bolstered by knowing that our citizens do support the police. Um, I can't imagine what it'd be like in a, in a city where, where they didn't. And I, I truly don't believe those cities exist. I think that there is a, a small contingent that's very, very loud. Um, and, and hell-bent on just creating chaos in any form or fashion. And this week it's the police, tomorrow it could be business owners, the next day it could be realtors. Doesn't matter. This small contingent is just hell-bent on creating chaos. And they managed to do it in certain areas, but I'm proud that they didn't manage to do it in Fort Worth. As loud as they got, it didn't happen, you know? And, and it's just very unique. I mean, I found my name on, in some of those protests, my name was on billboards. Marched through the city because.
And you're like, hey, you couldn't wait till I was running for county commissioner? Cause it's like, no advertising is, you know, bad advertising is still good.
That's a little, that's a little daylight, dude.
Well, and you know, and the thing is, is, uh, that small element that was able to raise a lot of noise. Well, you're, you're seeing the, you're seeing the ramifications of that now in those cities.
Yeah.
Right? Like, whoa, we made a mistake defunding the police. Yeah. And the detectives obviously called that a clue, right? And, and, and then now, you know, what's going on in San Francisco and, you know, in Oregon and, and, and then there was, I, I remember one I posted on, uh, Twitter and I think it was one of you like, so there was a guy running for mayor in Seattle and where there's another heavy defund police. And, uh, um, and he goes outside, he, he sees something going on outside his car at night and he goes out there, gets carjacked, right? And then calls officers and can't get any officers, not because officers didn't want to come, because there were no officers, right? Here's some, here's some alarming numbers that I, I found really, really interesting. That the, the number of people that have chosen to retire, the number of people that had just chosen to leave law enforcement and the number of people willing to hire into law enforcement. All right, the number, the, the, the first two retiring and quitting are all time high, never been higher than they were in 2021. And the number of people applying to come do this job has never been as low as what it is right now.
Yeah.
That's alarming, right?
Well, and, and that's why we take it so seriously, um, to, to try to be the most attractive city for the good ones that still do want to. Cause I mean, you know this, when you get involved in law enforcement, uh, whenever you, you sign up to be a police officer, you're not just doing it for a paycheck. You're doing it because you truly want to make a difference. Um, and I, and I've found, and, and this is why I think the folks over in Dallas are kicking it out of the park. Um, their new chief, Eddie Garcia is doing a phenomenal job. It's because you have to make your officers feel, once they get in, they get beaten down by the system because they, they look at all the noise. And you know, I mean, in officer's time, 94, 95% of an officer's time is, is spent dealing with 1% of society.
Yeah.
The 1% of society that's victimizing each other, the 1% of society that's unhappy, the 1% of society that doesn't like police. So that's an officer's job, day in and day out. No one calls them to give them a pat on the back and say, you're doing a great, great job. Let's have some, I mean, an accomplishment for a police officer is interfacing with a bad guy and taking him off the streets. Um, and so getting, getting our officers refocused, um, and even our applicants refocused and saying, you're truly doing this to make a difference. And so if, if as an organization, we can set a culture where we're empowering our officers and, and making them feel like they're making a difference, that's how you retain. And, and we've, we've been dealt a blow too, when it comes to retirements and, and resignations. We're not immune. Just because I believe we're the best city in the nation, doesn't matter. So, I mean, national politics is playing into why our officers are leaving. Cause what you find is our officers in Fort Worth, they're not leaving to go be cops somewhere else. They're leaving the business.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I think it's incumbent upon, and, and I think there's a recipe for success here. It's incumbent upon your police chiefs to stand up and set that culture. It's incumbent upon every elected official in every single office, no matter how far up they are on the, on the food chain, they have to come out and support law enforcement and set that culture in the elected official capacity. Uh, set your policies so that you're supporting the men and women in law enforcement, get them the resources they need to really make that difference. Um, but, but more than anything, they've got to be able to stand up. And when it's not popular, in the middle of a George Floyd situation, you've got to be able to stand up and say, this is Fort Worth, Texas. This is not Minneapolis. This is not, you know, Kenosha. This is not these, these other, these other places. This is Fort Worth and we support our police officers. So being able to say that when it's hard, because you know, it, it was hard. It was hard for a while. I mean, I had officers coming to my office and telling me, Manny, I mean, I, I'm wearing a uniform and I feel bad going into a gas station. I feel like I'm being judged just for being a cop. And that's so sad. I mean, that, that's a part that you don't ever want an officer to feel that way. And it's so foreign to folks like you and I who grew up, I mean, idolizing police officers and respecting them and knowing that they were there to, to take care of us and keep us safe. But having a society that, that, that by appearances, you know, having that perception that society doesn't support police, I mean, that hurts a police officer, you know? And, and, you know, we're like rhinos, we've got that thick skin, but I'll tell you, these, these folks go home and they think about it. You know, and so we've, we've tried to do a lot to mitigate, you know, that, that internal factor, you know, that mental wellness piece, you know? Our association, we provide free mental health counseling to all of our members. Um, it's totally anonymous. We don't know about it, city doesn't know about it. We just provide them that resource because we recognize that nowadays, things are a whole lot different than they used to be. And it's not going back. You know, I mean, we, we can push all we want, it's not going to go back. Um, so, so really it's creating an environment where officers can feel safe. That's, that's the path through this. Um, but if, if you have that city council and you have a chief that doesn't support them, then it's, it's never going to work. And, and you mentioned a few cities where it's bad. I'll mention one right here in Texas in Austin. You know, I, I talk with a lot of our leaders around the nation and Austin's one of the worst places. They're about 300 officers short right now, which you know, in, in a department their size, it's crippling. I mean, 20% of their workforce is gone. And then COVID on top of that, they've got people out all the time. I mean, so they're, they're not answering certain calls, which imagine being a citizen of Austin right now, dialing 911 and not knowing if someone's going to show up. I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a very, very disappointing state that we found ourselves in. But, um, like I said, I think that's why it's, it's incumbent upon all of us to, to step up, raise the voice and say, look, that can't go, you know, not in Texas, not anywhere. You've got to support your police.
Yeah. So we've talked about three incredible challenges that you've been able to navigate, right? Changing the history, you know, or changing the culture to fight with, not fight with, let me retract that word. Changing the culture to be able to navigate negotiations with the city that really, the only expectation they had to go off of is of what, how it was before, so you change that culture. Changing the culture with officers where you basically dealt with the same one. I mean, you, you, what the hell were you thinking when you decided to go do this in the first place, right? If you wanted to take on a challenge, I think those were the two largest one. And then doing it during a time when it's not the most popular time to be a police officer. So for, you know, anybody listening to this and especially, you know, be able to vote in, in, in your district, I think the, the fact that you're not afraid to face difficult challenges, you've, you've done nothing but demonstrate that. And then because the challenge, like you identified earlier, that I, I would like to spend a few minutes talking about is the most underdeveloped portion of the county. You were like, hey, I, I gotta go run for anything else. Hell, let me throw another challenge on here. I'm going to go for the, you know, cause I, I, look, I, all I do is research and development and everything else of like, what's going on with the numbers, right? I see it in real estate all the time, right? I mean, you're, you're sitting there watching it. James Peterson, you know, another EMBA alumni that I hired to come on with me, uh, nine months ago. He said it right. He goes, we were on a, a Zoom with a client, uh, and, and he said, look, people are loaded, loaded up in jumbo jets coming here. Ain't nobody getting on jets to leave.
Yeah.
We, we're going to try to find you the house that you need, not necessarily the house that you want, because there are none right now, right? So it's just a, 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 just a one of many, many economic examples of how fast, you know, Tarrant County is growing.
Yeah.
And look, you, you, where are you going to, I mean, when you live in, when you live in an area where you got the concrete kingdoms over here, there's only one place to go. And then you, you, you face further challenges, not only the infrastructure, but how do we maintain? Because I sat on, uh, uh, you know, the Texas Parks Wildlife Board, you know, for Operation Games, that you're talking about, you know, preserving the resources that Texas has.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, and so that's a careful thing to do is like, how do we grow but not overbuild? Where we can provide the things that people need while not depleting the natural resources? That's a, and that's a, that's a booger bear right there to jump into.
Well, and like I said, it's, it's a challenge where I, if I thought, and the reason why I'm running, if I thought that anybody else were up to it, and like I said, I'm not the brightest guy in the world. I'm not the sharpest cat. But if I thought there were somebody else who were interested in running and, and could do a better job, I would get behind that person 1,000%. I just recognize that there's a need and I think I can provide value and, and I'm up for that challenge. Um, and, and I'm up for that challenge because when, when you run for an office like this, you absolutely have to take stock of the challenges in front of you. You have to know what you're walking into. So knowing that there's a challenge of ensuring that we could, we don't overbuild, knowing that there's a challenge of making sure that they're going to overbuild anyways, so we need to build out the infrastructure. Knowing that the, the school systems need support, knowing that the local municipalities need support, knowing that as a county commissioner, you have the opportunity to be the great collaborator. Uh, and knowing that that's one of my skillsets and, and, and strengths, uh, is being able to, to take an ego off the table and say, look, I need your help. Or if someone comes to you and says, I need your help, say, okay, absolutely. Cause we're all in this for the same purpose. You're all in it for that same end goal. Uh, and that's to make a safe, prosperous society for your children, for my children, for ourselves. Um, and so ensuring that we have folks that are, that are willing to take the wheel and tackle those challenges. Um, that's something that, that, you know, I've been interested in for a long time and I recognize at this time, it says, Manny, well, stop talking about it. Here's the challenge in front of you. Go ahead and tackle it. So, um, I, I think that with the relationships that I have already, I think it makes it a little easier. You know, I've got a smoother glide path than if I were just coming into this without relationships with stakeholders. But there's still relationships that need to be built. I mean, we don't have a five, 10, 20 year strategic plan. I mean, we really have to sit down, not just with Tarrant County leaders, we got to sit down Wise County, Parker County, Johnson County, Denton, everybody who surrounds us and say, all right, where are we going? Where's our manufacturing hubs going to be? Where are our housing hubs going to be? Where are our roads going to be? Because right now we're missing out on big opportunities, big corporate relocations because we don't have infrastructure built out. Not just because it's not built out. Everybody understands it takes times to build roads. We don't have a plan. There's no plan. If you don't have a plan, you're never going to get to where you need to go. So I think that's one thing that I'm very, the, the challenge is, uh, it's, it's very real. But for me, it's exciting because I think we do have an opportunity in Northwest Tarrant County to, to really form something great, to ensure that we protect, because we're one of the most heavy rural areas in the county. There's four precincts and we're one of the most rural heavy. To really protect what we have, make it a unique area, but at the same time, make it an area where people feel like it's home and feel safe and feel like they're not overburdened with too much traffic or that their kiddos are in a school that's 10 times too crowded. We have an opportunity to really work with our partners to make that happen. Uh, and, and I think a lot of that's just keeping your eye on the ball, staying focused and not getting thrown off kilter, uh, whenever hot button issues happen, not getting thrown off kilter and, hey, let's go spend the taxpayer resources over here. You've got to be laser focused and say, what are our core responsibilities? Let's do those and let's be experts at those. Let's be experts at public safety. Let's be experts at building roads and making sure that folks can get to where they're going and business and commerce can freely flow. Let's be experts there. And then if there are fringe issues we can handle, that we've got the resources to tackle, let's do it. But let's be experts where it really counts. So I'm, I'm excited by the challenge, even though it is a challenge. And I felt the same way when I looked at pension. I felt the same way when I looked at the building. I felt the same way when I looked at contract negotiations. I felt the same way when I looked at the CCPD election. It was a challenge, but it was a challenge that we had to solve. It was a challenge that we had to go up against. Um, and, and there's no other, there's no other option. So right, wrong or indifferent, Tarrant County Northwest Precinct Four is growing and we have to tackle that challenge. There's no other option.
Man, so I like to end all these going, hey, let's go back to 20-year-old self. And I know we'd want to tell ourselves eight million things. But if you could go back in time and tell self, one thing that you knew self would actually take as a piece of advice to do or not do something, what would you go back and tell 20-year-old Manny?
You know, I would say, listen a whole lot more than you speak. Listen a whole lot more than you speak. Cause I found when I started listening more, that's when opportunities started opening up. When you start listening more, that's when your path becomes a whole lot clearer. Uh, I told you, um, just, just making the decision to go to the MBA program. I didn't make that decision on my own. I listened. I listened to you. I listened to others who did it and I took your advice seriously. I sat down and I listened. Whenever you're 20 years old, you, you think you know it all. You say, oh man, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to charge through life and push through every wall and, and you're invincible. Um, but I found that, that in order to, to really build coalitions and in order to really find the right path in any arena, you have to listen. And, and as I mentioned, the, the county commissioner decision, that came from listening to folks who've been there and done that. That came from listening to folks who I highly respect and, and who I, who I thought would always have the counties, the states and my best interest in mind whenever they're giving advice. And so 20-year-old self, sit down and listen, kid.
Man, so the audience out there, they become a fan, listening to the show, they want to support you. Where do they go? How do they do that?